Will you call this meeting, special council meeting to order? Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. The council doesn't object, so we'll go to reading of the mission statement. Hearing then the first and only item on the agenda is discussion only of notice of impound ordinance number 1191 and ordinance revised in its entirety, chapter six animal fiction six verse one, that's the town of Silver City municipal code. Counselor Thompson, would you like to talk to us about where we're at now with this?
Um, yeah, I guess, uh, talk to, um, the city attorney, um, and I, God damn ordinance, um, I, I think we need to clarify some issues, um, I don't know if we want to respond, I guess the, the main problems should talk about discussed it's...
Do you have any intent of making any major modifications on your own?
Not major, uh, I think the, there's places for minor modifications for sure, um, the stuff about the, um, the definition of, uh, service animal for sure, um, but I, I don't see, and the number, the overall number of animals, uh, we can discuss that, I don't see that as being a major change though.
How about, I know there was some discussion of conflicts with state law and...
There's certainly, uh, perhaps some, um, there was, uh, a point about, uh, nonconformity with the line use code, um, the part of my ordinance, if I understand what the complaint was, I could be wrong about that, um, was that there's a section that said that, uh, the, uh, ordinance has to be, has to conform with the line use code, um, if, because I say that, uh, it has to conform, uh, there would be some problems with, um, the revised animal ordinance, um, to me, there may be, we, we have to remember that both the line use code, um, and the ordinance should still conform whether I say it should conform or not, um, both are living documents, so if we create a situation like chickens, or we say, uh, it's okay to have chickens, or if we say it is okay to have, uh, a goat, um, and that is not possible in the line use code, then perhaps we need to change the line use code, um, and that's something that we, I think, need to discuss, uh, as a group. The problem that I see, the main, uh, problem is that I, I don't, I, I can't, uh, support an ordinance that is gonna create problems in the future, um, for example, we, we've seen this, uh, in, in a couple of examples, um, uh, the eighteen inch, uh, curbside parking, um, when that was written probably in the nineteen seventies, uh, it made all sorts of sense, right, uh, that the distance on the curb was a surrogate measurement for something that's fairly difficult to measure, which was how much the vehicle is going into the line of traffic. Unfortunately, as time, and, and when it was written, the, the, uh, range of width of cars is fairly uniform, so that surrogate measurement made a lot of sense, but as time went on, we started getting, uh, a much wider range in cars, so you have a Prius and a Dually together, and so all of a sudden that measurement, that surrogate objective measurement stopped making sense, and because, uh, we weren't able, because, uh, we had that in the law, um, we created all sorts of frustrations, the same thing happened with the, uh, uh, the, the chicken stuff, where a lot of people who really aren't a problem for the city were terribly frustrated by being, um, targeted, so I, I can't have an or, an animal ordinance that, uh, faces that threat. Uh, as far as the state, uh, conflict between, uh, state statute and, uh, local statute, or local ordinance, um, I don't know that there was a lot of conflict, I think there was redundancy, one of, and, and really the only people that read ordinance, um, are the officers, so, I mean, it's, to me, it, to me having the flexibility, uh, having the redundancy in something like this where we focus on, uh, the, the, uh, cruelty and violence is something that is, uh, redundant because it's so critical, and it gives people the opportunity perhaps to either go to, uh, district or magistrate court or municipal court depending upon the severity of the problem, and this is a theme that goes through, throughout the ordinance, everything is, uh, there's a gradual response to every single problem, there is a, a, a clear delineation between those problems that are pathological, that need to be prosecuted, and those things that can be relaxed, can be changed. Is there anything else?
Say one more.
Okay.
Could you actually articulate to us what is the problem or the list of problems that you're trying to solve?
Yeah, I mean, one of them is, uh, that we, one, one, the, the biggest problem, of course, is, uh, we've got too many animals, um, and the expression of that problem is, uh, uh, number of animals that are euthanized, the number of complaints, um, uh, a lot of the nuisance issues, um, if we do a simple supply and demand curve, when the reality right now is there's about four hundred animals a year being euthanized, that's quite a bit more than... A month? Wow, you're doing worse, um, when, when you have that supply level with the demand level that we have, um, that would indicate that the value of those animals is very low, so we should expect even more, um, uh, neglecting we actually see, and you, when you neglect an animal, the expression of that is barking, um, it's aggression, it's all those things, um, so, so that's the main problem, it's also a huge cost, uh, it's costing the city, um, quite a bit of money to deal with all these excess animals, the solution for that could be that we, uh, hire more officers, but again, that would be something that non, uh, animal owners are having to subsidize animal owners for, a more elegant solution is to use a market mechanism for, um, helping people to, um, make better decisions, so what we're doing is we're targeting where people make the decision to get a dog, or a cat, it's one of their puppies or kittens, that's one they're most, uh, attracted, so we have a mechanism that allows us to, um, track the puppies, um, and reduce the number of intact animals, that's the main problem, the other main problem is what we've seen with what happened with the, uh, with the chickens, if we have ordinances that don't allow for certain behaviors and there is no realistic reason for, um, having those, uh, regulations, um, then what'll come out of it is frustration, um, unless the counselor or someone can explain to me why a single dairy goat or a weather is, uh, creates more of a harm than a dog, or the average dairy goat, it creates more harm than the average dog, um, then I don't see how we can put that in the ordinance, it's, we're gonna deal, we'll have to deal with the same problems that we had with, uh, that we had with the chickens, so those, those are the two main things.
It's definitely a philosophy change in, in the whole concept of many of the aspects of how this was written, kind of, things still puzzled and really curious, do you have any idea on when the, when that curve would change if this was implemented completely?
There are, so, my favorite quote is that there's, there's the known knowns, the known unknowns, and the unknown unknowns, and so, one of the known unknowns is, uh, um, that the biological population that we're dealing with is, uh, Grant County, the kittens and the dogs, um, that are coming into Silver City are not solely generated within the county limits, and so, um, I, I have talked to the manager, um, uh, the county manager, and he's interested in, in looking at a similar ordinance, um, if we assume that the county, um, created a similar, uh, market mechanism, um, my guess would be that the half-life of the animals that are creating the nuisance is less than five years. The thing to remember on this is probably, my, my guess is, is that about, um, five percent of the total animals are contributing eighty-five percent of the, of the problems, so, and those animals tend to have, um, lower lifespan than animals that are taken, that are high value, so I, I imagine it would, we'd see an effect fairly fast.
Um, Counselor Thompson, you keep saying animals, but it's not the animals, it's the people that own the animals, so, well, we look at Silver City right now, and we don't know if the county would do this, whether Silver City or whether it's the county, we have people moving into Silver City, we have people moving in the county, we have people that go to El Paso to purchase animals, we have people that go to Albuquerque to purchase animals, we have people that go to Son to purchase animals, then people come back, it's the people that own the animals, so, it's like the animals that are causing the problem, it's the people, for all the animals that are causing the problem, so, um, while I understand that the intent is to, um, use a market mechanism to, um, uh, essentially change behavior, currently, while the number of dogs and cats is limited to two, we all know quite well that when people move into town, they could have four, they could have, and they may be good owners, and no one knows, there are no complaints, they could have puppies, they could sell puppies, and no one knows, because there's no complaints, um, I think what I'm saying is, is that I'm not sure that the market mechanism is necessarily going to drive the behavior you seek.
Well, that's, that's why we have two parts to the ordinance, one is the, uh, the market mechanism where it's absolutely obvious to everyone that it's easier not to have an intact animal, um, uh, it's gonna be, they're, they're signaling, uh, uh, throughout the process that says, you're better off having an animal that is fixed, um, the second part, so that's one part, and you're absolutely right that, that that's not sufficient, that's why in the second part, um, we have so much emphasis on correcting behaviors incrementally, and so, when, uh, there, uh, is a nuisance, instead of dictating the exact response, what we expect is that the police officers or the animal control officer would talk to the person and create a range of options that's available in order to make the situation better, um, this allows the animal control officer also to target specific areas, and because this is, uh, an emphasis on learning, it allows, uh, see, right now what happens is, and we see it all the time, there's a barking dog, uh, someone complains, it's complaint driven, um, the animal control officer talks to the person, and they end up immediately going into, uh, magistrate court, getting upset and moving into the county, and so, the root problem of the human behavior is in address, we never say, these are the ways to relieve the burden of these animals, um, they, it's entirely possible that, uh, that the barking, uh, is something that bothers the owner as much as the neighbor, but that person has no idea how to fix the problem, when, as, as part of a community policing, um, program, what you do is you work with the owner to improve the, the problem incrementally, that's what we do with all sorts of other things in the county as well.
And you know, I mean, it, it is a different philosophy, but at the same time, I guess, um, try to use an, let me use an example. So, what I teach, I'll have a student, let's say that, um, may have, I'll give, let's say they, they, they may have not understood that what they've done is plagiarism, and I'll give them an opportunity to redo the paper after explaining, give them a learning opportunity, and ask them to turn it down, they have to turn it down or they're gonna get a F, I mean, there's no return for class, so, they've been provided a learning opportunity, but, and in this instance, they have to, they have to do it, or they get a flat out F, or they can have an optional, different grade, albeit lower, but a grade, you know, a grade lower than what they, you know, if it was an A paper, they'd get a B, okay? In this instance, you, the, the animal control officer may provide them with several ways of maybe correcting their barking animals, um, but at the same time, I mean, what I'm talking about is, you, you, the original question was this whole thing about reducing the population of animals that we have in Silver City, so, nowhere in the ordinance does it say, you have to come back and show me that you have a license for an intact animal, no one ever has to prove they have a license, no one ever goes and, or a permit, do you see what I mean, for an intact animal?
Well, and, and...
You know, I mean, you can have an intact animal, but what I'm saying is, if no one knows that you have intact animal, so, I guess what I'm saying is, is, so, let's say I have four animals, and I, then my dogs have a bark, and nothing ever happens, and, um, I have puppies, or I don't have puppies, I'm a very good dog owner, I, the other three dogs are, 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 you know, not intact, and I have one, and I try not to because someday I might wanna breed, but, you know, maybe it's a male, since it's a, it's a male dog, so I would take the dog, and it would be sted somewhere else, and I would get sted feed for that kind of breed dog somewhere else, who's gonna know that I have an intact animal?
It's gonna be, I would think it would be a complaint driven situation.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go, so if I have a, but, but, but I'm asking Counselor, so let me ask the Counselor, so I have an intact male, that, all you need is one male, right?
No.
It's like you need one rooster, and it'll do a whole lot of fertilization, and what I'm saying is, is one male can do, you know, an awful lot of damage, like one male cat that's not, that's intact, that's roaming around, that no one knows who's the owner, can go around and make a whole lot of little kitty.
Yeah, cats are much more...
So, so no one's gonna know who owns the intact male, or who owns the intact females that are giving letters in other people's, um, yards or, you know, out in, you know, the bushes, you know, that's what I'm saying, is, there is no way, I, I'm not sure how you can ensure that someone pays the permitting fee, and it, how does, how, how this goes down, I mean, I mean, it makes sense, but then it doesn't make sense because these unfortunately are domestic animals, they're companion animals, and these are, it's driven by people, and people don't litter their house.
Uh, yeah, I think the, the cats...
That's over issue.
The cats are much more difficult.
But realistically, these are issues, there's an ideal and there's reality, and I think you have a great wonderful ideal, but the reality is, is I don't think we can, that it necessarily gonna work.
Uh, well, let me explain how this part of it works, um, and then folks can decide whether it would work or not, um, one of the, um, uh, one of the requirements in the ordinance says that if you have puppies, you have to have the license number, it isn't necessarily, so when you're saying that complaint driven, I think what we're talking about is everyone's eyes are out there saying, if you are selling puppies at Walmart, which no one's doing because, uh, uh, enforcement's worked on that, but wherever puppies are, it doesn't matter if you're giving them away or selling them, if you have a little cardboard sign and it doesn't have the permit number on it, then the animal control officer is gonna go give you a visit, then you start tracking those animals, any animal that comes into the shelter because of a problem, and you're absolutely right that if you have an intact animal and it's, uh, not running, it's, it hasn't been, um, part of, it, it hasn't been captured, it hasn't created any sort of, uh, barking problem, no nuisance at all, then it's, it's probably not a problem, but if we constrict the ability to get rid of animals, and then that is the point in which the educational process begins, because now we have access to the people who are getting puppies for the first time, so, the young families that, uh, I mean, this, this is the scenario that I envision happens quite often, where, uh, a family who is, uh, stressed for a lot of reasons, right, economic reasons or whatever, um, all of a sudden the kids come home, there's the, this incredibly adorable puppy, and the kids, uh, this, this moment of, um, conciliation in the family and joy, uh, associated with this puppy makes you, uh, makes the, the, uh, mother say, yeah, oh, I'll take this dog, unfortunately, they don't realize at that moment, because of a, a lot of, uh, families that are in that situation, don't consider consequences that extend beyond, uh, a week or a year or three years, a puppy is a fifteen year commitment with huge costs, you didn't realize that when you first get your puppy, so, we've created an ordinance where we can target the humans through this initial mistake, we also expect that through the market mechanisms, we'll see fewer dogs being euthanized, when we start seeing fewer dogs euthanized, then all of a sudden we have options for the, for enforcement, right now, when enforcement goes to a, to a household and sees a, a dog tied up, the neglect of that animal for the enforcement, for the owner of the, for everyone associated with that animal, the neglect has to be up to that point where it is worth worse than death, because a three-year-old animal that goes to the shelter is gonna be euthanized. Well, what, is that four, five? I mean, the, the problem is, the probability of it being euthanized is much higher now than it would be if the population rate, growth rate was lower, if there were fewer animals being euthanized, the opportunity for it being adopted is higher, that creates more options for everyone that's involved, so, if you make a mistake and you say, yeah, this dog is beyond, uh, my resources, um, and I have a very good likelihood that that dog's gonna be adopted from the shelter, then I may be more likely to put it up, once it goes through the shelter, then we know that it's not gonna be intact.
Well, thank you, I just, it's, it's still for me.
Do you have another solution? I mean, that's the thing, if you guys asked me to do, to make a, uh, to fix something and...
I mean, I'll be honest, I'll, I mean, I'll be honest, Counselor, for me, I think there's an ideal, and then there's reality, and, and I'm, I'm very pragmatic in, in terms of reality, I'm not sure that it, it falls.
So, how should we start?
I don't, I don't have a solution at the present time, but I'm saying that, I mean...
And this is something that I presented for everyone, we went to the shelter, and I said, they, they were, uh, hesitant as well, um, and I've always said the same thing with everyone that I've dealt with, give me a better solution, I...
But, but, I understand you're saying, give me a better solution, but at the present time, I don't think the solution that you've provided so far is the best solution in regards to what we currently have, there, I mean, there's still something that may be better than what you're providing, and I understand that, but right now, it's not, it's not making sense to me what you're proposing, the way you've explained it, I think it's, it's a very nice ideal, and I'll leave it at that, we can continue to argue for quite a while top of that, but I don't wanna take up for the time, because I know that the mayor probably has additional, I know I have other concerns with ordinance, as you said, but...
I think we oughta just get to the, the easy ones first.
Then anybody?
Which is the number.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to talk about the number.
You know, I've, I've made conflicting comments myself about the number, and how do you come about a number, and it's not an easy question, but when I look at one neighborhood just north of me, one block, and you count the houses, a lot, there you go, and I got that one block and has eighty dogs and cats, whatever, and that's not to count the ones across the street from them, one, I don't think, I don't see any way possible that it meets a lot of the issues that you just spoke of, in reducing the animals and, and increasing the value of animals, and I really don't see how it's gonna decrease complaints, and, I mean, you put eighty dogs in a block, and there's gonna be a fight, or one heck of a rowdy party, so, um, I don't know if two is right, but I'm really, really confident ten is not.
Okay, can I talk about that?
Absolutely.
Um, I really, like I said before, I don't really care what that number is, um, there is a, a, a logic to the reason for the ten, um, the logic is that it addresses not the other nuisance problems, it addresses hoarding specifically, and so where is that point in which we feel that there is a possibility for hoarding? As far as the supply and demand curve, whenever you're trying to move, um, the curve to higher value, what you're, and you're reducing supply, you don't reduce demand at the same time, so theoretically, it does make sense that you would allow as many animals as you want as long as they're not intact, so likelihood, and if we look... The likelihood, and if we look at the motivation for why people have so many animals, outside of hoarding, often it's because of things like, uh, their kids get dogs, they go off to college, they're not able to take care of those dogs, and so they get the dogs back. Or, uh, there's someone who has a dog that, um, they see extra, uh, a, a dog being neglected, and they adopt it. When the overall supply is reduced, that's what's gonna drive the number, when you talk about eighty dogs possible within a neighborhood, what's gonna drive it is the overall number of dogs available, the supply is gonna drive it. Not, you know, I mean, if, if we went to that neighborhood, and we talked to every single person, and we said, if you had the, uh, i- if we said it was okay for you to have ten dogs, would you have ten dogs? No one would have them. That's, it, it, it's just not gonna happen. Um, so, I know people are, are, have difficulty with the ten, but I don't see that as being a realistic problem. When you create, when you address, uh, the, the other issues, the maximum, the average number of dogs per household is actually gonna go down, regardless of what the law says.
Well, just, the likelihood of all eight houses on that block having ten dogs, you're absolutely right, I can't imagine happening. The worst option would be that one house on that block had ten dogs. Because the others either don't want dogs, don't want them intruding in their life, or don't wanna deal with it.
Well, how are they intruding? I mean, we've got that.
Cause you put ten dogs in a yard, and they're gonna intrude on somebody's life.
Parking, there's... Parking! Okay, so, we're gonna hit the parking, really hard, uh, as a nuisance thing. See, the problem is, is if we say it's a ten, we're, we're in the same problem as the, uh, uh, and, and I, I know the animal control officer really likes having a maximum number, two or three, cause that's a surrogate objective measurement for something that is otherwise difficult to perhaps measure. Um, our, the way we address that is to create a learning mechanism, instead of using this surrogate. Um, the problem with the surrogate is that it is, the, the idea is, is that you have, uh, this, um, uh, subjective pattern, and you have an objective, uh, correlate that allows you to, you're, you're measuring one thing for this other thing, right? So, the problem is, is the maximum number of animals is a poor predictor of nuisance. There are much better correlates for nuisance.
Hold on, we have a maximum capacity, exceeded maximum capacity of animals in the town now.
Yeah.
So, I think if you apply that exact same science to the overall system that you're speaking of, it, it's already failing. You know, and my solution might be, leave it as the two, and if you wanna have three or four or ten, go get a permit for them. And that way, if the problems that we're seeing now, around the entire system that we're working on, continue, we can identify. If you're not taking care of those three, four, six, seven animals, we've got you, we know how to get a hold of you, we know if your dogs are running around the neighborhood terrorizing, we know who they belong to, because they're on your permits.
That makes sense to me.
And I really don't buy Council of Edison's argument that people move out of town, and they may have three or four animals, right? People move in from other towns that had a whole different set of laws, and they come here.
Right.
People move into, yesterday, I was referencing the reciprocity on concealed carry, and there's a federal legislation going around that would allow reciprocity, mandate reciprocity across every jurisdiction in the country, which means the respect, the, the mandate for, the standards for carrying concealed weapons, then becomes the lowest denominator in the entire country. Well, we're looking at the same thing here. If you come in with three or four animals, and you're a good animal owner, then go out there, let the, let the town know that you've got the animals, and that you're gonna take care of them. And if there's a problem, we'll be on it. I, I just cannot grasp the ten.
Well, like, you even commented.
Yeah.
That it was horrifying.
Terrifying.
Terrifying.
Yeah.
Like, H for a T.
Well, and, I, I think, you know, um, and I go back to, you know, the notion that with that ten, there was this, uh, thing about no four, uh, which can be unsterilized, and how that, you know, once again, goes back to trying to reduce the, the population of animals. So, I mean, I agree with the mayor, just that I like that, and I, what I would do is use that number, use that two and say, if you have four, that would be the multiple animals permit.
That's easy.
And that's, that's a lot easier to, to deal with. Um, because right now, the current ordinance, um, says that you have to get a ten, well, it's not a ten, it's just a multiple, you know, dog, cat, or, you know, animal. Totally animal, because it would be a multiple companion animal for that, in that respect. So, that makes sense. And that way, people just go, cause, yeah, people do move into town, actually, the mayor, yesterday, I understand that someone moved into the, was moving into the town, the mayor did ask the, the clerk if they could have chickens, and the clerk said, no, you don't permit chickens in the town, it's fair.
And the ordinance, I love football.
So, one of the...
Football players just move in there with a football.
One of the things, uh, that makes it easier to go with the two animals, as opposed to what we had before, is the emphasis on, um, uh, changing behaviors. One thing that I don't like is how, right now, the way, uh, oftentimes, the animal control operates, is that if you are someone that has, uh, three or four animals, and the law says two without a permit, if he, um, he, he has the ability then to, to send it right to, to magistrate court, and you end up spending a hundred and fifty dollars, and people are angry, municipal, sorry, thank you, um, municipal court, um, and so it creates these frustrations. So, the second part of the ordinance, which allows the animal control officer to say, hey, you know, you've got more than, uh, two animals, or three animals, or whatever it is, and you just, all you need to do is go get this permit, it's not that much, and then we're able to track it, and then that's fine. Um, one of the reasons for the, for the ten being so high was, um, that we didn't want, uh, animal control officer using that variable to, um, send people to, to court.
I think Council of Ronis, um, specifically addressed that in the recent amendments to animal ordinance, by putting an administrative enforcement section that we just did, cause that was, we wanted to make sure that, in the future, that, um, the animal control officer had the option, um, to provide, uh, basically, the option of the, of the warning to, to corrective action, prior to going straight to citation, we didn't want that to continue anymore.
Yeah, and I think, I'll have to look at, at the timing on this, because, um, yeah, I'll look and see, but, uh...
Is that, is that correct, chief? It's now administrative enforcement, um, in the new animal. And the amendments that, uh, Council of Ronis and I put forward, that were passed, that recently adopted, that the animal control officer has the option for administrative enforcement, which permits the, um...
Have a clue. Did he not have that option before?
No, there was no...
He, he had to?
No, you actually have to have it down, okay?
Okay. Um, it's situational, it can be, uh, that there is enough information that the, the animal control officer may cite that individually immediately. In that occasion where the animal control officer has given warning, he's given directions of how to correct the issue, up to him, including options such as dog collars, to prevent the barking, et cetera, and down the line. Generally, what happens is the officer, animal control officer will not cite until there's one or two or three violations that have occurred. Uh, there's been an occasion where also had to issue recent subvention, or, or violation, noticing, for the purpose of, of correcting some of these issues. Um, as a side note, on the animal origin issue, uh, I do wanna bring up one thing that is very consistent with the, the noise ordinance which was put together, uh, can you have a thirty-minute lag time, uh, in for an officer response? Now, that's contrary to the, the noise ordinance that we already have in place. So, I, I would ask the city attorney to reconsider that section of that, for the purpose of staying consistent, so you don't have to provide these, this to the, uh, this pass going up, or, or you have ten minutes, or you have ten minutes, depending on what the action is. So, you know, I would appreciate it, uh, from the enforcement end, that we stay consistent with other, uh, ordinance of honor. Getting back on the subject, the, there's always options, the officer always sounds discretion, unless it is one of those issues, such as cruelty, the violence, et cetera, the claims, you have to do something anyway. I think, uh, yeah, I'm glad, and I have to make a conclusion to the, uh, the...
So, just a quick question, see, I think it's a case of start, right? So, um, I thought that, uh, wouldn't, that's kind of, we would have to have any information in this, uh, in any council ordinance about barking, since it's already covered in the noise ordinance. Are you talking about, we have, would have to do something else with the, with the noise ordinance that was just passed, uh, by the Council of Ronis? So, if you doesn't have in this, this is already covered in the noise ordinance, well, you'd have it in, in this...
Yeah, I probably will soon.
Basically have it removed from this, it's already there.
Right. Not only do we have it in the, the ordinance that was recently put together, but we also have a nuisance ordinance that that's covered on that. So, yes, we've done, but, you know, if you wanna get into some others we've done in an area, and try to talk to those you're with, um, or in one way.
Yeah, it's just kind of, in your face.
Yeah.
Was that redemned or, or, yeah, kicked out? But, was that redemned issue earlier, and you don't wanna kick it out?
So, I don't, I don't really, uh, to me, the redundancy isn't, um, that critical consistency is for sure. Um, I think, uh, having taken it out for the noise ordinance, um, that there is no offense, it's really, uh, having to be done to the minority. And my point is, uh, my, my point with having redundancy, um, relative to, uh, cruelty issues, between the state statute and local ordinance, was merely that oftentimes, um, we, we, not everyone is, is looking between the two, that there's, there's not a lot of difference between state statute and, um, uh, the local ordinance. Um, cruelty is fairly uniform, it doesn't really change that much, and my intention in, in creating that redundancy was to allow, um, enforcement to decide whether it gets kicked out to magistrate, or if it's such a, a minor violation, but still needs to be, um, prosecuted, that it would go to the, uh, municipal court. And I, and I could be wrong on that, and I'm not really bothered if, if we end up just, um, uh, referring to state statute, that's fine with me, it, it doesn't matter. I was thinking that for something, part of, part of how this thing was designed is to allow people to see that, uh, violence or cruelty is something that is, uh, treated completely different from things that you can learn from. That would be the intent of, of putting the redundancy in, and we can remove it.
I would, all my issues, I, I would really like to remove the redundancy, because I think the redundancy is a very complex issue sometimes, you know? And it could be pretty much a matter of legislature, and we would then have a brand-new ordinance that complies with the law. And, I mean, we have a law that preempts our ordinance at the local level. It, it's really a fuel attempt, for us to add it to our code, and we have this preemption that we can't, think we can't manage. So, I, and if it's going to a magistrate court, magistrate has higher capacity for, in some terms, they have the initial resources that municipal doesn't have, and, well, these are, some of these are really emotional issues, and some of them, whether they're acknowledging their uses in the busload of their animals, they may still consider it a balance, so I think magistrate courts, yeah, much better reserved to handle that, and they should not be in municipal court, so, that's...
One of the other things the, uh, the, uh, city attorney brought up too, is that that's a, a court record, and so with, uh, cruelty issues, it's nice to have that record, so, no, I, I'm fine with that.
May I ask you something as well? Cause one of the things I noticed is that, uh, throughout the document, the state law is separated out and scattered throughout the, the document, whereas it's intact in state law, in some cases paraphrased, and so it doesn't really follow state law completely or accurately, and, so that's the reason why I would want it to be removed. And in one case, um, on page six, um, it says dangerous animal, also vicious animal, and state law makes it a station between vicious animal and dangerous animal, because there is a state law in the books that says it is unlawful for any person to keep any animal known to be vicious. And it's called the, a vicious animal law, and it's, uh, it's seventy-seven dash one, um, dash ten. So, um, I think that we need to, if we're gonna use any words in here that refer back to anything that's, uh, state statutes that we actually refer back to state statutes, is that we cover in, in sort of things you made, and also, um, for our, um, officers to ensure that they are, um, covering, um, state statutes as well, so, if you have one. Yes, and also for, um, folks here in town, that they know they can go to a state, they can go to state statutes on the web, um, we can also, if we don't have already, put that link on the website, ensure that state statutes, so that they can, people can look up that under our ordinance, is, I mean, because we refer to them so often.
And uh, what again, I just think that it is uh, the first line again. Uh, for me, for you. Yeah, that's uh, that's indeed it. Um, the next one, uh, fifty fifty four, this kind of a study, um, and also six line rule. This is a, this is a, this is a, this is a, uh, two, two, as we all know.
Okay.
And, uh, we're in ten minutes. The, uh, from the early, uh, dog on the other side of the twenty one, I'm gonna have to ask you. Uh, one of the most specific issues, uh, you might see, and I would say, my ability to see, uh, the, uh, right something or, uh, showing us a question of the one that's saying that. Uh, true, true, as we all know, the United States is a very, very dangerous, uh, country. And having long since, uh, we might have more, like, people who may say, uh, they're, uh, they're, uh, uh, and I call it a disaster. Uh, but we, we just tend to think that, uh, too much, we might be out there. So, uh, we can truly take these things by the gut. We have a, uh, animal that is, uh, partially being, uh, the animal, you know, does attack somebody. The person who's posed a thing that the animals can keep out and let it license that the animal, now you have the deep type of theory because you will allow that to happen. So, I can, if you open the door, it's, it's gonna be a terrible place, uh, down the road.
Can I stop by your office and give you fifty bucks and, you know, free scene, past weekend?
There you go. Nothing happened, but, uh, uh, there's things from, there was years of citizens that were coming out, uh, where, uh, going at, uh, government from using, uh, police, like, uh, so that, that government, uh, this is one of the, uh, potential, uh, very most, uh, presentable, might not happen. So, it's only that it's more, it's a child gets more by the known dangerous animal, uh, you know, being a, a criminal. There's one thing that I wanted to tell them. So, when we all knew, what is it, huh?
Um, I would really like to speak to the reality of that, right? Uh, I don't know if I had already described the incident, um, there was a dog on Silver Street. Um, it, uh, was, uh, he'd come out to it, uh, attack me. Um, I knew about the dog, all the neighbors knew about the dog, had a child in the bicycle program who was, um, wanting to ride to school. The first day that he rode to school, he got bit, the, uh, animal control officer knew about this dog. He said, oh yeah, this is a huge problem. Um, and so instead of having this graduated response, where we say, this is, this is a mean animal, it's a potentially dangerous animal. It hasn't shown itself to be vicious and we're gonna take care of this problem at this stage. So, it doesn't become the stage where the kid is, uh, attacked, I mean, it punctured his, his leg. Um, everybody knew about this animal. The problem with the, uh, current ordinance is that if you feel threatened by a dog, uh, the response is that dog has to put down. And so because their response is so extreme, our response is that until the dog actually viciously attacks someone, we don't put him down. And so that's the, that was the, the, the logic behind the potentially dangerous. And the potentially dangerous, uh, if I'm walking along a street and a dog charges me and it's on the other side of the fence, that's kind of potentially dangerous. And there is a, a mechanism that allows us to, uh, change those behaviors. Um, to me, the state in that, uh, example is being much more responsible than pretending there's no problem until it gets attacked and then banned, while we didn't even know. That's the logic behind it and, um, I think, uh, the idea of if, if, if a dog creates a, a tear where you, you need closures, um, it's gonna cost you a thousand dollars a year, plus, uh, you're gonna have to do all sorts of stuff to make sure that that dog, um, doesn't encounter, uh, people. Um, the likelihood of that happening is, is pretty remote, that dog's gonna be put down.
I appreciate that, we, I think, from the one that you've been saying, uh, you want to know, in the future, if they're drafted into that category, uh, that, uh, making changes into, uh, the, how they're listed. A public, if I can handle a few, uh, attacks, so the thing is that, uh, I, I was considering, you want to handle, you, uh, for children, uh, attention, things that are, uh, here.
Yeah, no problem, she, uh, yeah, I, I, and, and I, I think everyone should know that I've been bit by a lot of dogs on my bike. I, I don't like vicious animals. Um, uh, the thing, the, the reason that there is an, an avenue, um, for people to keep a dangerous animal are those instances where perhaps, um, you know, you charge the dog or whatever, where closures were needed. If you go to the emergency room now and you got, uh, a, a tear and it, it gets the ball rolling for all sorts of stuff. It may not necessarily require always the dog to be destroyed, um, and that's why we put in those extra options. I think that when you have a situation where a dog has bit somebody viciously, um, it's, it's gonna get destroyed. Again, I don't have problems with that, uh, having a mandatory, um, destruction of the animal.
Is that good, ma'am? Um, I was just gonna say that, I mean, in the case you've been fed, you haven't entered the, the dog's yard, the dog has been running at large?
Yeah, well, no, I've had, uh, uh, running at large and on, I've had instances where it's on a leash.
It's on a leash until the owner's there to control it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, no, let me, let me finish too. Um, so I guess what I'm saying is the, the state statute talks about potentially dangerous animals and dangerous animals, so it covers both. And, um, I don't know, I, uh, I'm sorry, but my little Pomeranian, somebody runs, if somebody walks by, she's gonna run to the fence because she's protecting her yard. So, apparently she's now a potentially dangerous animal. I can't tell you that she doesn't like people to come in the yard because she's protecting me. She's very diligent about that. Um, whereas, you know, I used to have the big lonely children say, come on, Eden, here's where all the stuff is, take it, just pet me. Um, so, you know, people are scared of big dogs, they're not scared of this little dog that runs up and could potentially bite you. But I don't like people to come in the yard and I always pick her up and hold her so that that doesn't happen because I know that she's protecting me and I can't stop her from doing it. She's very protective. So, I think, you know, when we're looking at something like a, so I think to follow the state statute, to follow, um, what needs to be done is the appropriate thing. Um, I know there was recently something that happened in Albuquerque with a dangerous animal or potentially a dangerous animal, that you have to follow all of the, all of the steps in this process. Because, um, by state statutes, animals are property. They're not, I mean, they're personal, they're personal property. Yeah, so there, there's certain things that have to be followed along the line. And so, um, I, I think that, um, I would not like the town to be placed in a position that, is it be a potentially dangerous dog or a dangerous animal? That we be placed in a situation where we said, okay, you've paid your fee, so you can go ahead and keep it. Or you've paid your fee for your wild, um, cat or exotic mini bear or whatever it may be and it gets out and something happens. So, I have issues with the wild and exam, and exotic animal permit because they can be dangerous as well. Not always, but they can be. And I would not want the town to be placed in a position of liability if something happens and someone, a child or anyone else, um, you know, an adult or anyone, you know, is bitten or something happens. Um, so I, I agree, we don't want to be placed in that sort of a position where we're permitting something within the boundaries of the town that is, um, not conducive to the health, safety and welfare of the town's inhabitants, which is what we're charged with, is right. Yes, and my apologies, but I'd like to make a motion for a brief recess. I think that.
This is a motion, and we'll, we'll have that in the topic, and you'll be, we'll, we'll come back to that.
We, we want.
There's a motion.
Got it, right again.
Got it. It's a good, it's a good.
There's a motion second for a brief recess, follows any written protest, man.
All right.
We will call a special meeting, and then we'll go back to order. And we only have about thirty minutes to go today. What you're saying is actually not an issue, is there's been some changes on the number of people, so it would probably be good to continue to send feedback to the council. And I think we're gonna make some, some changes on, if we have no choice, and then, then raise your hand, so it's, so we, uh, somewhere in the, in my thoughts, um. The other, you know, we might have a lot of time, so the, the public to turn around and comment on this one. While I also have the other, I'm trying on this, and we're, we're really not to a point of having a document, which we, we'll collect our house, so it's ready for consideration. So, we're gonna keep working for the next thirty minutes to make sure that we, we provide, uh, the council as much information as we can, uh, come to a consensus in some time.
Mayor of City Council, thank you. Um, prior to the conclusion, we're talking about the potential dangerous animals, that, that's situational, and, and it's handled situational under the correct ordinance. Um, depending on the circumstance, dog is always gonna protect their property. But that doesn't necessarily mean that dog is a potential, potentially dangerous animal when it comes up to the feeling such as protecting its property. Um, so, in effect, that's a situational issue that, that the officer has discretion to deal with. As a side note, the worst bite I, I, uh, have gotten, being employed was from a trial who came up and got me under the back of the, well, the killing the killer. So, you know, I wanted to kick that dog over, you know, the house, but, uh, again, it's situational, it's just protecting its property because I am into it on to the property. On that, the rest of these to do, the other maintenance that I have in theory is, is pretty much a technical issue, one such that I'm gonna bring up just now before we complete your, uh, in, in a portion of the ordinance, uh, under the shared security, uh, animal housing, so, uh, certainly, you know, to, uh, to, uh, try and, uh, you know, a lot of towns, dogs and, uh, cats. So, that may need to be adjusted, there might be other avenues that we, we have, uh, a cow, uh, there may be an issue with housing, such, uh, other animals, which is live animals. Uh, and that might, we need to take a look, yeah. Uh, there may be, you have to sort of, sort of choose that, that we have to now build an additional facility or look for other avenues, uh, to, to, uh, in the city council. The last thing that, uh, I wanna discuss, but quick, is, is, and, and just put forward, uh, based on the ordinance that the, the city council, um, is looking at and adjusting, uh, the essential for, um, additional expenditures is pretty good. Uh, I mean, that's obvious that that's gonna happen, yeah, even a, uh, portion of this, such as the application process, inspections, et cetera. Uh, in reading through the current document, I anticipate that I would have to hire two more animal control officers plus possibly a part-time secretary, uh, suggestion to deal with this. The animal control, current animal control officer is making approximately twenty-five thousand, I don't think that includes benefits a year or so, that's condition of the law, uh, that the city would have to, uh, pick up on top of additional equipment for expenditures. And, and the rest of it's more of us are technical, or, or push it forward so that the, uh, city council also has the, uh, plan.
Can you find one, because I, I've covered this before, I just don't see it, if, um, if we're, I mean, part of this, this copy was it, is we don't really know, um, how it's got to be a, uh, um, the theoretical, um, uh, theoretically, you should see, uh, a fairly drastic reduction of, um, nuisance animals, uh, within the body of yours. Um, when I look at the, uh, non-occupant, uh, those enforcement bodies that currently, uh, engage in nuisance behaviors, you know, channel call for, uh, parking and, uh, and, uh, bike, um, and things like that. Um, I, I would have to pay, act my expectations, this is gonna go the way down and nobody else can see it on those things that are more important. Um, so, I'm, I'm a little, I'm, I'm a little confused as to why, uh, this morning for three, um, tomorrow.
Depending on how many animals that you, you allow a person to have, that's gonna create more work. This last year, if you take a look, and you guys should be, uh, city council should be seeing the stats, um, comfortably by Friday or Monday. Uh, the other increase in animal, uh, complaints last year, I think it was three percent, uh, four percent, uh, increase. With the worst of it, we're going to end up having, and we'll be behind the curve for a little while, and maybe rise it down the line five years from now, it may decrease. But at the outset, getting used to an education, uh, for complaint driven, because of the number of animals, uh, the likelihood that's going to increase our cost for service. So, based on that, we also have now, uh, specific inspections that have to happen, specific permits that have to be, uh, put in place. We also have to go out and periodically make sure that they are maintaining their pro property or that permit, uh, when they do renew. Now, here's the caveat. We're talking, um, you know, like, one, one year. And now with years, how many actual complaints do we get, uh, about, and bar? How many actual complaints do we get about cats? Dogs, humans, et cetera. Those are our three major complaints, especially in the evenings, et cetera. So, you're gonna see an increase if somebody has more dogs. You get one dog barking, they're all gonna start barking.
And I, I think, just to add to the same, if there is reduced number of dogs, I mean, I, I really, I mean, I, I'm, I'm amazed, it can, it can, we can have it less. But I don't think that's what's driving, um, the pattern. What's driving the pattern is the number that's, that's down. So, we're addressing that, we, uh, aggressively, um, is, I mean, you sort of defend, and you see, the, the difference between having an infected animal and having a fixed animal is so overwhelming. If you need a reasonable person that's gonna say, and, and especially now with, um, the, uh, the fridge door creating enough money, that it's obvious that, that you're gonna wanna, uh, fix your animal. You're gonna have, uh, most of that cost taken care of. And so, to me, that's, that's the job, not the number, you know, the maximum number of canals. I really don't think that if we reduce the overall number of animals available, the number of puppies available to our city, then that's gonna drive need for more than the maximum number that we allow for them. I, I really don't think a lot of people are gonna go out there and just clean up. I don't know that, but, and we can just have it, you know, I don't care. But I, I don't see, uh, that as being something that's gonna require too much.
And I do, because I'm the one that has to deal with the, the, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm the one that has to deal with the, the number of cars, complaints, et cetera, that we deal with. Uh, are currently, our control officers want to cause after hours of, our animal control officer. And that's gonna increase in the evenings and in the graveyard. So, I'm not going to burden my fees officers with the enforcement of this, uh, without now supplementing and ensuring that I give quality control of the, to those ordinance, with an animal control officer.
Yeah, our goals are identical, right? I, both of us want to reduce the number of nuisance cars. Um, I don't see this as creating more nuisance cars that we need, and even that's a big difference.
And I tend to agree with you in the long run, it may, may, again, reducing the number of complaints, but again, at the outset, it's going to increase.
And the, the, the variable that's gonna increase is primarily is the canals. I mean, that's more, that's not fun.
But I still, I still believe we are gonna solve it, and we'll go. Probably regardless of the final ordinance, because the complaints don't come from each of the world, we can threaten, essentially, if, if it's twenty-four seven problem. And we've, uh, the third is that, so. But I also think the theory behind this ordinance is to increase location, increase the ability to provide a good, safe home for animals, to make them less intrusive around, to decrease the numbers. But to get there, what we call an animal enforcement officer, their duty, would increase in being educational. And as they go out there and they work there, educate people, and to show them, you know, this is not sufficient, you know, but going to, and you're locked in the back, it's just not gonna fit. And making sure that they have a good home for them. That's gonna take time. And if we ignore the educational effort, nobody's really gonna help. I mean, nobody's really, really paying attention to the laws until cops are, or the animal control system. But they just don't care. That's why I'm still a mayor, nobody knows against me, they just don't care. I mean, I'm not the smartest person in this town, but we don't have an active society. And to come out with a, and we're going to decrease the animal through increasing the value, is going to, is going to draw out this, uh, public education. Being out there, using that administrative code to go in and say, look, this is a diner, this is what you gotta do to get there. People won't pick it up on their own. Right, when you love it, there are ten thousand people in town and there's just thousands of people in the other. So, generally, people don't care unless it's really improving in their life. You know, their neighbor's daughter's parking, or running loose, or not being cleaned up after, or single point tethering, or whatever the issue is, describes them, or cops are, unfortunately. So, I, I think we, we have to address, one, we really have to be careful not to write policy to correct the position in enforcement. We, we can't fix the enforcement issue, we can write all the laws in the world to not enforce. So, I, I do think we have to take a look at some points, I mean, what is our animal control, whether it's staffing, numbers, hours, um, resources. And they have to be given enough leeway to work with people with complaints, but not enough that nobody knows what the standard is. And, you know, the example that is, is a little fearful part of being in a, in a breeding plant. Where it says, sign up to an animal control officer, and it doesn't mean that the time, the duration, the circumstances of achieving, probably for your staff. I would really like to know what might be in a plan or excluded from a plan, with the animal control officers, which I, is approval or disapproval of my plan. I don't think that's real clear in that, in that definition. And I think that's an issue for, we probably give staff too much away and could allow personality, and things that somebody's right too much. That's what I think, we, regardless, we're gonna have to, uh, uh.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, um, uh, I, I think that there is a possibility that the educational aspect would, uh, require more random, certainly, if we were that. However, um, the benefits of, uh, that sort of community policing, um, to me, uh, believes in the other parts of, uh, enforcement. Um, when, when I first started on council, um, thinking about strategic plans, um, you gave me those papers on community policing. And the, the place, the inner space, the vast inner space oftentimes, or, um, dealing with, uh, populations that have, that are facing challenges through their own. And it allows, if they're neglecting their animals, they're neglecting their kids. And most of, this is a model ordinance for exploring problems and allowing people to, to trend toward improvement. Um, so, to do that, um, what's, the, the beauty of that is that you stabilize behaviors oftentimes when you're really punitive. And we see this all the time, where, uh, uh, it's a dog barking or whatever and, uh, they, they go to court. Um, their response, because they don't truly know how to fix the problem, is, uh, they use this thing, or we displace the behavior. We don't want to displace, we want these behaviors to improve. We don't wanna force folks out into the town because they got, uh, very. We don't want to displace them. We want these behaviors to improve. We don't want to force folks out into the county because they got, uh, very, very little bit more than, that they're in the county. Um, and yeah, that, that can be a problem. But on the other hand, I think that, uh, other costs that is retention, your police officer, you're gonna have such a better time seeing people improve than being hard at improvement. I think we talked about this quite a bit. And, uh, is that going to increase the overall cost of enforcement? It's a hard call because it gets pretty messy, doesn't it? So, I don't know. I, I wouldn't want, uh, the other part is the, the educational part, which is the part that would require some more, uh, expenditures. It's fairly open ended. Um, and so that allows us the flexibility to take time. Um, and if we see those incremental improvements, um, then I think, uh, our expenses should go down. I mean, that's, that's the main goal, one of the main problems of this, of, uh, that I try to address is this ordinance is totally reduce, uh, the cost of employment, uh, related to, um, animals. I would much rather the police officers be out talking to people and doing all that stuff. It's much more, do you know what I mean, with, with animals? It's really hard for these guys, I, I imagine. Um, because they're, the dogs are down with, um, they're compelling, uh, arguments. Um, the, the instance of the officer having to decide whether that animal should go to the shelter where she has a hot, her brother highlights that it's being, even, uh, forcing and neglecting is a horrific place to be. And oftentimes, you know, I think we talked about this, that the mom of the family, the mother of the family who made the decision, an officer leaves, she's the one that can get it. Because the daddy, you know, the, the man of the house, doesn't like having an officer coming into his business. So, yeah, that's, uh, my main concern was to actually go work, um, at that enforcement cost. So I've been surprised to hear that there's, there's this cost that's been increased.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, maybe, uh, one of the things that, that, uh, that the mayor mentioned is people need to, we need to look at potentially increasing our animal control office anyways. And honestly, when we were to move on, on this new ordinance or say with the old ordinance, I believe that's the case. I, I think we, we, we need to start considering, uh, maybe even a budget for animal control office, e- either way, um, we, we had some issues there. Um, one of the things I would like to, to mention when I have a look at this is, you know, I wanna thank Councilor Thompson for, for opening my eyes on, on many issues that there's a philosophy here that's very important and profound and, and very interesting. Um, I'm not sure if it has brought me, um, to where I would support it over the current, current ordinance. Um, might not even have put me on the bench for that, but it definitely brought me to that very point at the other side. And I enjoy a lot of what I see, but, but I don't know if I'm there, ready to support it, um, yet over what time we have. But what it has done is, is, uh, is, uh, it's brought a lot of attention to our current general ordinance. It's brought a lot of, um, comments from the public. And as I look at the comments from the public, there are a handful of things that people say, "That's right on the line. We need to do that." So many of those things, I'll, I'll, I'll illustrate a very specific example here, like the single point tethering. That is something that, that, that the community has done, "Yes, that is right. We need to do something like that." And that is more people saying, "Yes, we support this ordinance. We want this ordinance" because of items specifically like that. But the handful of items, items that they're saying, I believe we could amend our current ordinance to fulfill that. And, and I want to, and I want to suggest to Councilor Thompson to, as he's looking to modify, uh, this current ordinance, um, to fulfill, uh, the needs and the comments here, also consider an amendment to the current ordinance to say, you know, if, if these are the items that have, have permeated as the most important issue, maybe I could do that with more success. And, and I've mentioned this in, in other ordinances that I brought forward, because I wanna see success. I, I do not want to see, um, uh, ordinance is brought forward, uh, and it's worked on extremely hard and, and by, by counselors, like, like Councilor Thompson. Bring it forward and put all these man hours and see a fail. I want to see something succeed. I wanna see this, the, the group disagree for, um, be successful and push forward. And, and I, I just wanna suggest that, that you look at the, potentially say, "These are most, these, these are things that I, that, that, um, that the community has found in specific issues that, that are a problem. And can I actually put these into the ordinance?" Uh, that the current ordinance with more success. And, and I think that's possible. That's possible. Though even a, even a, a complete change of the ordinance, it may have some, some potential as well, with the rewording, but, uh, but please look, look at that and actively, you might, uh, come up with something a little, a little more powerful. Thank you.
Did we run out of time here? I don't wanna make the same mistake I made once before. The discussion that we have today is, is because we have to do it in an open meeting, we can't all sit down and share those behind closed doors. So that would fight a little. So, these are discussions. This document still belongs to Councilor Thompson. Um, he still has the ownership of it. He has the rights and ability to amend it as he sees fit. We are giving our individuals lots of reasons, ideas on how to create a document to, to help him. But as agenda basis, it's informational and we're having a discussion. This is not a, none of the, there was no decisions ever really made in this meeting. So I, I kind of ended the meeting on this very same topic a few years ago, in the opinion that the last person speaking was the opinion of the entire body. And I don't wanna make that same mistake. So, uh, thank you. And I hope we can continue, you know, what's the, 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 our neighbors in our, 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 our.
Mr. Mayor, I lose the gun.
Mayor, I take the motion. The motion is very good. I'm very excited.